I will ask Councilman Calvo to lead us in the pleasurable leaders.
Our country's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask Councilman Calvo to lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we are grateful for all the many gifts that you have given to each of us. We're grateful for the work that you have given and that you have been chosen to lead this city in its direction. We ask you to be with us, open our ears and our hearts so that we may hear one another, work for the times where we dish our great city. We ask you to bless these United States, keep the men and women of our armed forces close to you and bring them all home to you.
President. Will the clerk please call the roll?
McMan, Nagashet.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Umbetta.
Present.
Calgino.
Present.
Parkin.
Present.
Visconti. Cheney. Esposito. Sadi.
Present.
Calvo.
Present.
Basso.
Present.
Rotello.
Here.
Dix.
Here.
Tyshults. Katsumpis.
Present.
Riley.
Here.
Saraceno. Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Here.
Taverse.
Here.
There'll be fifteen present, six absent, but the record reflect that Councilman Esposito and Councilman Visconti are on business. Councilman Tyshults is still undergoing treatment. Councilman Saraceno has a professional commitment this evening and Councilman Maschini is on business. Councilman McMan is also out of town on business. Will the clerk please read the notice of special meeting?
Members of the common council, a special meeting of the common council of the city of Danbury will be held on March 19, 2007 at 6:00 PM in the common council chambers at City Hall in South Danbury for the purpose of communication, tentative agreement, police Danbury police contract ordinance, police pension revisions, section fourteen point fourteen dash nine, fourteen dash fifty-two, fourteen dash fifty-four, fourteen dash fifty-five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The record reflects that Councilman Maschini has just entered and pleaded with his business. Mr. President. Thank you, Your Honor. First time I'd like to make a motion that we accept the call for the return to service. Second by Councilman Nagashet. Any discussion about return service? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds, halls in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, signify by saying nay. I accept the motion. Carries on as the return of service has been accepted. The first thirty minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. At this time, I would ask any member of the public who wishes to address the council. They have to address the council on items on the agenda and they have to be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury. With that, is there any member of the public which should address the council seat? Just give your name and address and we appreciate it.
I understand that you are going to ratify the police contract. I have a question as to why section fourteen fifty-two is included in what the council is going to ratify and not included in the tentative agreement with the union. I stress fourteen fifty-two subsection C was not approved by the police union. They couldn't vote on it and they didn't vote on it. As I read it, I call your attention to the last line of subsection C. Last line means same grade and rank of section number eleven act of service of the department. I believe, and I don't know, but I believe the intention of this is to affect the escalation clause of the police officers who already are retired by including same grade and rank. This is a counteract, which I stress again, when one of you is retired, it should not affect us in any way, shape, or form. There's going to be a grade add, which would, I agree, increase the pay by one and a half percent or something like that. We can't accept this mainly, not only for ourselves, but you are affecting widows of police officers who are deceased. Some of them are only getting half of the pension that I am getting. It seems like a truly devious way of affecting a pension by bringing it up at a time when it's something you're not even approving. I can't believe to you, Mr. Mayor, would agree to such a thing. I know the police union didn't agree to it because they didn't vote on it. And I was certainly hopeful that the council members would not adversely affect the retired police officers and the widows by approving this section. If, I wouldn't propose a problem without a solution. My solution would be rather than same grade and rank, if you would put same seniority in rank, that would be perfectly acceptable and it would not affect the pension as no one, I think, wants to. I'm certainly glad to answer any questions that the council has. I might add that I'm actually the president, the vice president, and I've negotiated over half the contracts in the last thirty-six years between the city and the police department. Thank you very much.
Foley, we will have Ms. Diorio address that in her presentation, but just very briefly, the language that you see in here is a reflection of both the arbitrated agreement that required changes to the pension ordinance from last year, along with the new tentative agreement that was ratified by the union last week. So it's a combination of both. However, I believe, and the Director of Finance has changed, that this doesn't change any existing language to the current level of benefit to the sixty-seven retirees. And this language is already in effect. It's the same language. So it's certainly not our intention to change any level of benefit for any retiree and obviously that's on the record here tonight regarding that. We appreciate your input and the Director of Finance will know a little bit more detail when she comes up and addresses that. So I appreciate your question. Any other member of the public which should address the council seat? Seeing none, then we'll move on with our regular meeting. At this point, with the council's indulgence, I think it would be easiest if the Director of Finance would just do a brief sort of overview of the contract, address the concerns that Mr. Foley brought up, sorry, I suppose the officer Foley brought up during his remarks, and just give a sense to the council of what the TA encompasses, as well as the order of changes.
Okay, why don't we just go through the kind of agreement that you have before you and then we get to the pension sections. When we get to the pension sections, we can talk about the concerns that were just raised. The first page talks about vacation scheduling. As you know, as part of Vision 2009, we are going to have a reduction in the number of captains that will be on our police force. And this language basically allows us to have the same number of people on vacation at any given shift, but we're changing the rank of those that would be allowed to take vacation to take into account that we have more sergeants and fewer captains. So just a reallocation of vacation time amongst various forms. The same thing on the second page having to do with overtime. Because we're deleting two captains, this language, as it affects captains, is no longer applicable. So in terms of filling vacancies that occur, we've actually deleted captains and added the tenants and sergeants in order to fill those overtime slots. The next page, Article sixteen, has to do with wages. This is the impact of the reorganization. What we're doing here is we're giving a one and a half percent, one and a half percent, and two percent increase over three years to take into account the loss of promotional opportunities due to Vision 2009. In order to affect those increases, we are creating new steps for those individuals who are in rank and who are affected by the reorganization. If you can answer questions after, I can answer now. The next page talks about wages again. This is the general wage increase. And what this does is it extends the current contract to the end of 2008, a three percent increase effective July 1, 2007, a three percent increase effective July 1, 2008, and for July 1, 2009, we've agreed on a floor of 2.5 percent for negotiating purposes when we go into contract negotiations next time around. The next section talks about vacancy of ranks. Currently, the way the contract reads is that the city has to request an exam within twenty-one days of vacancy for any position that's vacant where we don't have an exam. And post the exam, you have to fill vacancies within sixty days. Because of the civilianization that's going to go on in the police department, we added language here that said if a position is going to be civilianized, then this language regarding filling of vacancies would no longer apply. Because if we're civilianizing, then obviously we're not going to fill those positions and we need language in the contract to clarify that. Okay, Article eighteen, this is one of the pension provisions that we changed. What this does is it changes Article fourteen dash fifty-four. And what it says, if you have twenty-five years of service, your last five years of service, you'll get an increase in your multiplier from two percent per year to three percent per year. And this is designed to give us an incentive to get people to stay longer. We want our police officers to stay there for twenty-five years. In addition to that, there's a ten-year lockout on pension changes. So going forward, there'll be no additional pension changes for ten years. The next section talks about disability pension provisions. What we've done here is we've changed the disability pension process to make it a little bit cleaner as we go forward. One of the provisions says that a member is not going to be able to get a disability pension if they refuse reasonable medical treatment. That's an issue that's come up and we've been able to clarify that. In addition to that, there's a five-year recall provision. So for the five years after you retire, every year, you'll be submitted to a medical exam to determine if you're still disabled. If a doctor decides that your disability has abated, you will be recalled back to work. If you don't accept the recall, then your disability pension will be discontinued and you can apply for a regular, non-service connected or non-disability pension and lose credit for those years of service that you received the disability pension. So this allows us to make sure that people who really go out are truly disabled and can no longer work as a police officer. Now, with regard to the pension question that came up, I guess I'll address that here. Section fourteen fifty-two, the only provision that changed has to do with the COLA provision. And the COLA provision was part of our arbitration award that we received last March. The language that the gentleman referred to is the existing language that currently exists in the pension plan. There was no change to any of that language.
If I was in an ordinance book right now, I'll find that language.
Exactly. So I'm not sure where that confusion is coming in, but there were no changes made to that particular provision in the pension plans.
So the intention is that no widow will receive any less than they're receiving now?
They'll still continue to get the same increase that they would have got, that everybody else would get. The only thing that they're not going to get is the increase that everybody else is getting due to the reorganization, the one and a half, one and a half, and two. Retirees are not going to be eligible for that, but they will be eligible for every other general wage increase that they've always gotten. So there's no change in that COLA provision for retirees. The next change is Article twenty-two, the car minimum provisions. Currently, we have seven, nine, seven as our car patrol minimums. With one week within signing of the agreement, our car patrol minimums will go to eight, ten, seven. Upon full civilianization of call-taking and dispatch, it'll go to eleven, thirteen, and nine. And upon reaching the full patrol strength of one hundred and six police officers, we'll be at eleven, fourteen, and ten. And this is a reflection of Vision 2009 and where the chief thinks that we need to be in terms of police officers. Article twenty-three talks about job descriptions. We've agreed with the union that we are going to revise all the existing job descriptions to more accurately reflect the changes made in rank as a result of Vision 2009. And we're also going to develop functional job descriptions that'll be far more detailed about what these positions mean. And this is going to be done as part of the accreditation process that the department is currently going through. And the union is going to be involved in the development of all of the job descriptions. The next section talks about civilian dispatch. And basically, what's going to happen is it's going to be a two-phase transition to civilian dispatch. And the department, as soon as it's practicable, which is probably sometime between now and when the building is built, the department is going to hire civilian call-takers who are also going to work on the front desk. And as call-takers are hired and trained, they're going to replace police officers who are currently performing these functions. And those police officers are going to go back on patrol. At that same time, we're going to have a nine-month transition period where there'll always be a civilian and a sworn police officer in the dispatch office. When the nine-month period is over, it'll be fully civilianized. And following implementation, there will be opportunities for police officers to work in dispatch if they choose to. There's going to be no requirement that they fill in if there's civilians that aren't available or they call in sick. There's not going to be a requirement that they do that, but if they choose to and there's slots available, they will be able to work in the dispatch office. Article twenty-nine is the duration of the contract. As we talked about earlier, the contract will be extended from June 30 of 2009. And then there's also going to be some amendments to the rules and regulations required to accommodate the agreement. We're going to change the titles so they more accurately reflect what's being done out there. So a captain is going to be known as a division commander and a lieutenant will be known as a ship commander. And that'll be in line with what will be implemented in Division 2009. Then we're going to have some side letters to accommodate the changes in the organization. One is that the department is going to agree to have a table of organization and if there's any changes to that TO, that they will discuss those with the union. One of the union's concerns was that they didn't want the city to have the right to just change the TO whenever wanted. So this gives them the ability to work with the city if there's going to be any changes to the TO. In addition to that, we've agreed that there's always going to be two sworn personnel, most likely a ship commander and a booking officer, in the building at all times. And these two sworn officers will not go towards the middle or the end requirements that I talked about earlier. And if there isn't going to be any changes to having sworn personnel in the building, then the city and the chief will negotiate that or discuss that with the union. Employees currently on promotional list. When we actually made our first change last year, we eliminated two captain's positions. There were two employees that were on the list that would have been promoted. And they were severely impacted by the reorganization because they did lose those promotional opportunities. So what we've done is we've agreed to pay them from the date that they would have been promoted to the signing of the agreement at captain's pay. In addition to that, we're going to let them retire at captain's pay to accommodate the fact that they did, did in fact lose out on those promotions. Having said that, there may be promotional opportunities in the future when a captain's position opens up, they would have to retake the test, but they would have been promoted had not gone ahead and made these changes.
Questions for Dana Foley?
To the chair. Dana, when they become civilian, civilian dispatch, I call, when they become civilian dispatch and it's going to be totally civilian, there will be, will there be a police officer or someone that has the jurisdiction to look over them in the office at the same time? Or will they be, so but I'm going to ask, or will it all be civilianized?
There'll always be a sworn ship commander.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Sade is first, Councilman. Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, to the Director of Finance, I have a couple of questions also, probably to the police chief. Start at the end with regard to the section that Officer Foley had pointed out, fourteen fifty-two, and the mayor's explanation that there is no change here. I'm looking at the two pages and I'm trying to find, is there any change in language? And if not, why is this even before us?
The change in the language has to do with the COLA provision. That's the language that's underneath in all capital letters. That's the change language. And that's the COLA provision that we agreed to with the union in the last contract arbitration. So in order to have all the pension provisions in the ordinance, we want to include everything so that when we do our pension books and all of that, all the language is in one place.
The reason I ask it that way is because all the other sections before us have underlying language that indicates the actual language changes, where I'm just trying to understand, and I tell you, Mr. Mayor, the language on these two documents is identical. And what you're saying is this is that which was approved in the arbitration that previously occurred? Okay. And follow. However, just to get back, that was not Mr. Foley's issue. I mean, he was taking a specific sentence, is that correct?
He was taking a specific sentence in the prior paragraph that was not changed.
Wasn't changed. In subsection C, the grade and rank is the same language that just surprised the arbitration. If I may follow up, is there anything in the agreement, the tentative agreement, or in any of the proposed ordinance changes that impacts any pension, retirement, or disability formularies because you're changing some numbers somewhere else and it may impact another section of an ordinance, another provision of the contract?
No.
And with regard to the disability, there's one provision you spoke about through the chair, to the Director of Finance, with regard to reasonable medical treatment. Could that be construed as requiring somebody to get an operation, for example? And if they refuse to get an operation but take other rehabilitative therapy, but don't go, let's say, to the max that's recommended by the medical professional, what would happen to them?
Well, what we've done is we've included language in here that would require the pension board to use the same standards of the workers' compensation law requires. So there are specific standards in the workers' comp law that talk about what reasonable medical treatment is. And we included that specifically because we didn't want that to be an arbitrary decision. We didn't want the pension board fighting over, you know, well, is it, you know, shouldn't you get the surgery, shouldn't you get the surgery? Because we're not doctors and we're certainly not physician to make that decision. So that was why the workers' comp standard was included, to make sure that there's a standard that can be followed and it's not an arbitrary decision we have.
If I may follow through the chair, to the Director of Finance. Where is that standard set out? Is it the state workers' compensation? Is it statute or regulation?
I think it's in regula, I mean, I'd have to find out for sure, but it's, it's, the standard's applied in workers' compensation cases. I don't know if it's in a reg or if it's in statute. I'm not sure where that is, but there is a standard that's applied. Probably in rec.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Attucky.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to the Director of Finance. Dana, in fourteen fifty-five B, subparagraph three, "The retiree who accepts recall shall be given years of credit of service provided he or she shall make contributions for those years, from the same number of years as the period of disability." I'm sure that references back to someplace else in the agreement, but could you explain to me what the contribution would be?
Well, as you know, police and fire employees make a pension contribution. They do a percentage of their salary towards their pension. So when somebody retires out and is recalled, we would ask that that person, if they're retired one year, we would ask them to make the contribution that they would have owed if they were still employed. So in this case, it would be four and a half percent of your salary for how many years if they were retired.
So if I may, my follow-up would be, you're disabled, your pay's half of what it used to be, is your contribution going to be half of what it used to be also? Does it reflect the lowering of your pay? Or do they still have to, the guy paid fifty percent, is he still paying that the contribution that he would have had even making a hundred percent?
He would make the contribution so he would be, as if he would have made a hundred percent.
Okay.
Because he's going to continue service now, so he's going to accrue more pension credit as time goes on. So we would, because he's going to get full pension credit for that time, right?
Yeah.
He's going to come back to work and he's going to accrue more time, he would be required to make the same contribution as if he was working.
But in point of fact, he'd only do make, say, half of what he would normally do.
But when he comes back to work, he's going to go back to full pay. So we would work with that person, we wouldn't, you know, take it out of one check, we would have overtime.
Okay, so he's, during those, let's say, three years, during those three years of disability, he has to pay X amount of money that he normally would have had enough to be disabled, even though he's making less, so pro-rata when he comes back, he can pay a little bit of the time to make it up. But he will be responsible for the full amount as if he had not been disabled.
Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, Director Finance. Thank you.
Again, just so I really understand, based upon the new agreement and targeting into fourteen dash five-two, the language stays the same, meaning no change either for the retiree and/or spouse regarding adjustments each year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. To the Director of Finance, I have two questions unrelated, so if you can bear with me, please. In section fourteen fifty-five, on the whole concept of disability, if an officer is out on disability and is required to see a doctor to recertify the disability, I'm a year ago where he said, if that officer is called back to duty, if I understand it correctly, refuses to come, there's a period of time he has to report back? And then he would, would he be on the disability at that point? Would he, tell me what happens to him at that point if he doesn't show?
If he doesn't show, then his disability pension would be discontinued and he would be put on a regular pension based on the number of years of service he had prior to going out on the disability pension.
Another question. If he is called back, if I understood your explanation earlier, if he's called back and does indeed show up, but then decides for one reason or another after, say, a week's time that he can no longer function as a full-time officer, what takes place at that point?
He would have to apply for a pension following the normal process.
Okay. Can I get that second question or should I wait to have some? This is unrelated to this, but there apparently was a concern among some of the lieutenants that we were notified recently about the pay scale that they would be having. And I understand that during a period of time, the lieutenants were being paid, doing captain's duties at a captain's rate. Can you explain to me what's going to take place under this agreement in the future for these folks?
Under this agreement, the lieutenants would go back to lieutenant's pay. But they would still get the benefit of the salary increases that were given as part of the reorganization.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, Dana. The civilian dispatch position that's being created, I realize there'll be an officer, a sworn officer in the building at all times, I remember. But the overtime, if someone, for instance, a vacancy due to illness, a police officer could become a civilian dispatch and it's special assignment, what does that mean, special assignment? It's noted, special assignment?
I mean, I think the chief can answer that a little bit better than I can of how special assignments are created.
They have to take special training to become a dispatcher, be qualified to be a dispatcher. That's what the special assignment is.
That they would have to take, the identical training that a civilian would have to take to become a special?
Yes.
Okay. And that's considered, then, if that police officer is taking that position, is that overtime for that police officer? Considered overtime pay?
It would depend on the circumstances, but most likely, yes.
And then if someone knows that they're going to be out, say, for some type of illness, they know they're going to be out two or three months, that position is posted, so any of the officers have a chance. posted, so any of the, uh, officers have a, have a chance to apply for that particular position?
They have the specialized training.
Okay.
Want to do it, yes.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Otello?
Through the chair, to Ms. Diorio, just a follow-up on Mr. Otello's question, just so that everyone's clear on this. If an officer is, goes out on a disability pension and is out for three years, let's just pick three years as an arbitrary number, if he's recalled, he or she's recalled, if they had twenty, let's say they had twenty-four years in of service at the time he went out on their disability, excuse me, came back, if they were to retire after twenty-eight years, they would still get credit for those three years that they were out on a disability pension, correct?
That's correct, if they, if they agreed to, if they agreed to the recall.
Then they would retire out with twenty-eight, four years of service.
They would get the full credit for those years if they ran on disability.
So that's why they would be required to pay the hundred percent of the pension contribution for those three years because they'd be reaping those benefits of those three years. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, a couple of questions I have to, um-
A question to Dina, then to Chief Baker. Um, on Article eighteen, you stated there to be no changes in the pensions prior to July one, two thousand and seven. Can you explain that a little bit more, what that means?
All right, on page eight, then, sorry.
Page six.
Are you talking about the April one, two thousand and seventy?
It's July one, two thousand and seventeen.
Oh, it's the re, it's the lockout provision.
So that'd be no increases in-
No change in any pension provision for ten years. We can't ask for any increased employee contributions, they can't ask for any increased benefits, we can't ask for decrease in benefits, they can't try to get out of one of the contributions.
But they could be changed in ERISA.
Sorry, what?
ERISA, the, the rule that governs pensions.
Well, we're a non-ERISA plan. Municipalities are non-ERISA plans.
And the other question is, what will be the impact of this, this contract on our current city's budget?
Um, the total cost of the agreement, which includes the two-year extension with the pension changes, um, over a three-year period is about one point eight million dollars.
Not just for year two thousand and seven?
Seventy, so-
No, no, just want to make sure we're clear about this. That's over the three, the total lifetime of the contract?
Correct.
Not just for next fiscal?
Beginning July one, two thousand and seven.
So what, so that be divided by three?
Yeah, I mean, it's one, one and a half, two, and then the, you know, the wages are three, three, two and a half, so, I mean, I guess theoretically you can divide by three. I mean, the way I have it calculated, it's just on the wages, it's about four, forty-five next year, five, fifteen the year after, and six, twenty-four the year after that. The pension changes are about two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. But that wouldn't hit to our next valuation, which wouldn't be until two thousand and eight.
My last question to Chief Baker. If this is approved this evening, which I think it probably is most likely going, what will we, what would the average citizen in the city see from the changes in this contract?
Within a week of signing, we'll increase the squad car minimum to by one on the day shift and on the, the four to twelve shift. That'll be the immediate impact.
What would be the long-term impact? I mean, for the average person in this room this evening, what would they see? I mean, attitude change, well, I mean, I'm looking for the overall, from your perspective, what would the average citizen see from?
The ultimate objective in the long-term is to increase the number of police officers that are on the streets of Danbury. And, um, uh, there's a lot of jobs within the police department that we can, uh, turn over to people that aren't sworn and, uh, have trained, uh, you know, to the full-size of police officers, get those police officers back out on the street. And that's the long-term goal here, is to increase the number of police officers on the street twenty-four seven.
Follow-up. Given, as, under the current contract, how many patrol cars, that's the minimum, max, and what, what's out there on giving shift?
It really depends on, uh, the number of vacations, the number of sick calls. Uh, the only thing I can tell you for sure is the guaranteed contractual minimums. Uh, if we fall below them, we have to hire through an overtime process, uh, and that's seven, nine, and seven right now. And like I said, it'll increase at eight, ten, and seven upon signing.
So, um, again, on an ideal world, again, what would you like to see out on a given shift, at, at, at between the, the morning shifts?
My ideal world is the ultimate, when we reach a hundred and six police officers, and I don't remember exactly, eleven, fourteen, and twelve, or, I don't remember the exact numbers, but that's the ultimate goal, yes.
Which is outlined in Vision two thousand and nine. That, that is the chief's ideal world.
So what, what we can expect in, in three years, we'll get an, an average, three more cars out on patrol?
You'll be guaranteed to have those cars out on patrol. Right now, you're only guaranteed to have seven out on, uh, eight to four, uh, you know, nine out on four to midnight.
That's its minimum requirement.
Those are minimum requirements, since, you know, some nights there's twelve, thirteen, you know. Really depends on sick call, vacation, the time of the year, uh, training schools that are going on, those types of things, injuries.
Uh, Chief? What's your opinion on this contract as a whole?
I'm sorry?
What's your opinion on this contract, are you favorable with this contract? Any concern that you see in here, that you need to address? Or that officers have been addressed, that you'd be saying?
Contract was a give-and-take process, and I didn't get everything I want, the union didn't get everything they wanted, but, uh, we met somewhere in the middle and, uh, I think we have a workable plan. Uh, I know there are people that are not happy with the contract and, uh, we'll do what we can internally, uh, to, uh, try and remedy those situations, but, uh, overall, I think it's a significant, uh, change for the department, a historic change for the department, and, uh, I think in the long-term, it'll serve the city well.
Mr. Otello, you got another question there?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, either through the Police Chief or to Personnel, um, Chief Baker, do we currently have police officers that would be covered under the sixty-seven pension on duty today?
Yes.
To the mayor or to Ms. Diorio or Director of Personnel? Just curious, of the membership, sworn membership currently today, the vote was taken last Friday on the TA, do you know what the exact numbers were on the vote?
It was one fifteen to twelve, thirteen.
Yes, thirteen.
Um, Mr. Riley, and then Ms. Otello.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, Chief Baker, please. Uh, Chief Baker, uh, uh, all for the, uh, civilian dispatchers, I, I just wonder though, I mean, the police department being paramilitary, uh, and it seems to me, as looking at the description, very, a little bit as it is, uh, do you think OJT or on-the-job training for these people that would fill this position, will that be enough, you know, in terms of getting acclimated to, um, rank and file, uh, the, the workings of a, of a paramilitary group as you would? Do you think that it would be workable with just OJT, so to speak?
Some of the positions will actually require formal training, uh, outside of the job, uh, you call papers or dispatch, you'll have to go through formal training programs that are established by the state. Uh, but I think between that and the exposure on the job, I think that, uh, we won't have any problems, fully realized, of people with paramilitary structured training command and, uh, who to report to. I don't think that should be an issue. This is, uh, uh, is being done by police departments all over the state of Connecticut and it's being done successfully. Uh, I don't think we'll have any problems here in Danbury.
Thank you. So another, what you're saying, Chief, is that there, there might be times where these dispatchers might be sent out of the city for a particular school or whatever it might be?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Mr. Otello?
Thanks, Your Honor. Through the chair to the chief. Could you just explain to me the situation with the lieutenants? I got a letter today, very last minute, and they're saying that they're expected to do the work of a patrol captain without compensation. They're the only group within the department that's got an increase in responsibility while taking a reduction in pay. They talk about a reduction in the opportunity for overtime, and finally, they say, under the new agreement, patrol lieutenants will also have a diminished opportunity for time off, and they talk about the swapping, you know, normally you swap off the lieutenant, but now they've got to add some sergeants to the mix. Is this, is this accurate? Is this an issue that can be fixed, or was this just a consequence of, of the arbitration or what?
Uh, it was a consequence of negotiation. Uh, the lieutenants, uh, when we started the negotiation, we removed the captains from the patrol shifts, uh, they received an in-charge differential, they essentially received captains' pay, um, that's the biggest impact to them. And, um, like I said, negotiations is a give-and-take process, and, uh, uh, the lieutenants have brought the same concerns to my attention. You know, we're investigating what we can do at our end, um, but, uh, those are, uh, concerns that they did raise and, uh, some of them are validated.
Is it something you think you can work out?
We're going to try. I mean, we're going to have to depend heavily upon the lieutenants, uh, because, uh, they're going to be key players in, uh, making this plan work.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Otello? Mr. society?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, through the chair, um, to the Chief of Police, with regard to the civilianization, I understand that civilian dispatchers and other civilians would have to take certain courses and be certified. I understand your response correctly before they could engage in dispatch or whatever other duties that civilians may take over within the police department. My, my concern more is along the lines of background checks, histories, whether job performance, criminal or otherwise, and who sets that standard? Is there a uniform state standard or is that town by town based on the individual's PD's desires?
State sets it for police officers. I believe it's done on a town-by-town basis, uh, you know, with regard to civilian employees, but I, I think that we will, you know, adopt strict standards in terms of, uh, bringing civilians into the department because they will, will have access to, uh, sensitive information or, you know, the position of trust, and will want nothing but the best in terms of backgrounds with those types of people.
I need to follow up, Your Honor. Uh, if I understand it correctly, are the standards or are the standards currently for police officers set by the state and that's either statute or regulation, uh, uh, the state level? On municipal level, would we need an ordinance? When you speak about putting together standards that would protect the department and make sure that we had people of, you know, of thoracic, that, would that be done through departmental regulations or do we need to adopt an ordinance in order to codify these types of standards so that they don't change from time to time?
I think we could do it, uh, as part of the accreditation process in terms of our policies and our procedures, our protocols, uh, because we're trying to reduce the writing, just about everything we do is part of this accreditation process. Uh, if you'd be more comfortable having it codified in the ordinance, I don't think anybody would object to it, but, uh, um, you know, to save you the trouble, I, I think we can codify it perfectly well within our policies and procedures.
Is there anything, uh, through the chair, uh, within either this contract or any existing ordinance or policies and procedures within the department that would limit our ability as a city and you as a department to impose very strict background check standards on civilian employees coming in? And also, and then a follow-up question, where would they fall within any other union provisions, whether municipal, union, and where would these employees fall into, uh, you know, with any other union on, on the city level?
I guess I would defer to, uh, Director Personnel Finance in terms of where they fall in a union. Um, I'm sure they'd want to be a unionized workforce, um, and I, you know, I don't know regulations or rules that prohibit us from, you know, establishing strict standards to, you know, for civilian employees.
And, Your Honor, just a follow-up, then, to, to the Director of Finance, Deputy Director of Personnel, or, just trying to understand the dynamic that will exist between the sworn officers in the department, the city, uh, you know, the executive ranks as well as civilian employees who are in the department?
It would be very unlikely that they would be part of the police union. Um, it's anticipated that they are going to be unionized, they would be part of, um, our administrative, our administrative union.
So when they're hired, they would automatically be part of that union or would they have to vote to join? I, just trying to understand it in the context of the overall plan.
Well, generally, how it works, um, is when we create new positions, we, um, don't really slide them anywhere, and the union will come forward and say they'd want a bargaining unit.
And to the extent that they would get absorbed or join an existing bargaining unit in the city, do any of those contracts, that's my concern, would there be provisions there that would inhibit the city from imposing very strict background standards and, and histories on these people?
No. Because, you know, you're only in a union once you're hired, and the pre-hiring process, we can pretty much run you through any kind of process we want. You only become a union member once you're actually employed.
Well, once these civilian, uh, employees would be hired, it wouldn't, and I say it would be necessary, but it might be reasonable to periodically check their background, time, you know, or sort of update their background checks. Would that be prevented under any existing union provisions?
It wouldn't be prevented, but they would be treated unlike any other employee in the city of Danbury. We don't do that for anybody. We don't do it for police officers, firemen, directors of finance, um, so there would have to be a very compelling argument that you'd be able to make to say that they would be treated that way when nobody else is.
May I just interject? We, certainly if there was a question about employees' behavior, the chief could always initiate an internal investigation related to whatever the allegation might be, draft a report for it, and apply this kind of procedure. But we don't do that for police officers.
I know there's, well, you know, there's a different dynamic in officers, there's sworn officers opposed to civilians who are employees and not sworn, and they'll have a higher standard of fiduciary obligation, but that's a whole other issue. So, thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Uh, Ms. Stavrosakis, I have a change here.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the Finance Director. Um, in the Article seven on vacations, it says that either two sergeants or one sergeant, one lieutenant can be allowed off-duty on vacation at the same time. Can two lieutenants be allowed off-duty on vacation at the same time?
There'll only be lieutenant, one lieutenant on, on any given shift, so you wouldn't ever have a situation where you have two lieutenants. They're going to be the ship commanders, so there's only going to be one lieutenant on each ship, so that you wouldn't have two that would want to take off at the same time.
And on the article on overtime, would a lieutenant ever be serving because of an absence as a shift commander without being compensated for that?
Well, lieutenant, it is, it would be a shift commander.
On the section sixteen on wages, could you tell me how many police officers or police detective officers would be on step seven, July first? Those with eleven years of service?
There's currently forty-seven who are police officer sixes. I don't know how many of them would have eleven years of service, but I suspect the majority of them, just by looking at the names, would have, um, eleven years of service.
And as a follow-up, could you tell me how many, um, sergeant, detective sergeant, lieutenant, detective lieutenants might, um, reach the new step four or beyond the new step four effective July first?
Well, there's seventeen sergeants and there's three detective sergeants. And how many of those have, um, I don't know how many years of service all those people have.
And on, uh, a follow-up, the vacancy of ranks, are there any current dispatchers who are the rank of lieutenant or sergeant or captain?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Are there any current, currently, we don't have civilian dispatchers.
Correct.
Are any of the dispatchers of the rank of lieutenant, sergeant, or captain?
As police officers.
And, uh, I did have, um, one additional question. In the, uh, the employees who are going to be paid a captain's pay from the specific dates in the agreement until the signing of the contract, has the contract been signed?
No, because you haven't approved it yet. All right.
Uh, my question is, what happens after that? Do they revert to their pay as lieutenants? Are they paid as captain from just those two specific dates till the signing?
Correct.
And then they return to lieutenant pay?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Seaver, um, at the last-
Very quick, thank you, Your Honor. I guess it's to Dina, um, no, actually to Chief. The dispatchers and the people that are currently take care of the front desks of the police officers who have been trained in the academy, do you foresee any of these civilian replacements for these positions to have a necessity to go through the academy in any shape or form?
Not at academy, but they'll have to go through the state certification program.
Where does that take place? Here?
Uh, Maryland, I believe.
Thank you, that's fine. That will entertain a motion for Mr. Negaesh.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make-
I'd like to make a motion to approve in terms of the funding for an agreement entitled City of Danbury and Danbury Police Union Local 891, Council Number 15, A F S C and A F L C I O, tentative agreement, impact of police, uh, impact of police as part of the organization and extension of current contract in accordance with established requirements of state law.
Okay, so I can have Mr. Seaberry's discussion. See, now, now, try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who signify by saying aye. I actually have a motion carries down this. Just wanna emphasize one more time for the record that the retirees' pension level and the widows, widowers, whatever the case, is not changing at all. That's a problem considering all the particular. Would that will go to item two? Mr. President?
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we refer to item number two, the ordinance changes to public hearing.
Seeing no objection, item two has been so ordered. Would that entertain a motion to adjourn? Let the record reflect that Council McMahon has entered the room and has joined us for these votes. Council Ms. Sarasino has joined us about 6:40-ish or so. Anybody else come in? Six, six, not, 6:25 for Council Ms. Sarasino, 6:40 for Council McMahon. Can anybody else come in after we get started? You know, everybody does, just shoot these. Okay, let's see, and then a motion to adjourn. Second in all favor?
Aye.
Close. Adjourned. The budget for the City of Danbury. I would ask the clerk if you would please call the roll.
McMahon, present. Negerzach?
Present.
Johnson?
Present.
Tombeda?
Present.
Tom Gino?
Present.
Perkins?
Present.
Visconti? Cheney?
Present.
Esposito? Sadi?
Present.
Bravo?
Present.
Vasco?
Present.
Patello?
Here.
Dig?
Here.
Ty Schultz? Consumpus?
Present.
Riley?
Here.
Sarasino?
Here.
Seaberry?
Here.
Stanley?
Here.
Stavrosak?
Going, three absent, eighteen present. Would you please let the record reflect that Mr. Esposito and Mr. Visconti are currently conducting business in the city here? And that Mrs. Ty Schultz is undergoing medical treatment and is not with us. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Section 7 that 4 of the Charter of the City of Danbury that a public hearing on the general budget for the City of Danbury, Connecticut for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2007, and ending June 30th, 2008 will take place on Monday, March 19th, 2007, at 7:00 p.m. to hear comment on the budget. Number one, ordinance and resolution, and ordinance-making appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2007, and ending June 30th, 2008, and a resolution levying the property tax for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2007, and ending June 30th, 2008. Item two, ordinance, and ordinance appropriating $500,000 for public improvements in the 2007, 2008 capital budget, and authorizing the issuance of $500,000 bond and bond anticipation notes in the city to meet said appropriations. Said public hearing will be held in the Common Council Chambers at City Hall, 155 Deer Hill Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut, at which time and place a public hearing will be held on the appropriations and tax levy pursuant to the section, said Section 7 that 4 of the City Charter. Three copies of said budget are available in the City Clerk's office for public inspection. And this was attested by Jean Natalie, City Clerk. And we just make notice to everyone present tonight that persons of interest and taxpayers of the City of Danbury, you must be a resident or a taxpayer of the City of Danbury in order to speak about the budget. I would ask you, when you come forward, when I recognize you, to please use the microphone, address the council, and state your name and address, and then post your, voice your question to us or your statement to us. This is not an answer and question session. This is just us here to listen to your comments on the budget proposed tonight. At this point, I will open up the floor to anyone interested in addressing the council tonight about the budget. I'll start on the left-hand side, may I? We're gonna be addressing first ordinance, levying the property tax.
This is the property tax?
This is the, this is for the budget, correct.
I'm just asking.
And please have your name and address for the record.
My name is Solis Corstiano, and I live at 1791, Danbury, Connecticut. And I just wanted to address to you that the property tax is being increased for this budget. I think there are items in the budget that can contain, you know, that the spending is now available and not increased.
Thank you, Ms. Corstiano. Anyone else on the left side of the room wish to address the council? Mrs. Lawrie? Mr. President? Is that microphone?
I'm symbol, 83, Danbury, Connecticut. I didn't have a lot of time, so I worked a little bit this weekend. It said, "Our budget has increased $50 million since 2002." My income certainly hasn't increased anywhere near that. It has actually gone up almost $60 million since 1997, which is a 10-year period, and it's an awful lot of money for the taxpayers in this town. I am very grateful for the credit for energy on our taxes. I hope you pass that. I personally miss the city clerk and the assistant city clerk. It makes it very hard to get documents if you can't be there during a certain period of time. Hopefully, some of that will be dissipated now, with this wonderful young lady who's gonna be there occasionally. I am disappointed by the continued shrinking of the city side of the budget. City Hall serves all the people of Danbury, and I think it needs to keep up. I was looking at the, the grants, grants in human welfare, which I know will be tomorrow night. And I was doing a little comparison with a worksheet that someone was kind enough to figure out on the computer, because I'm not computer literate. And it came out that the children, the youth of Danbury gets an additional $426,333 for all of the different agencies that appear to be doing the same thing, like Connecticut Institute for Communities, Danbury Children First, CAR, Escape to the Arts, Green Chinnies, Harambe, the Youth Center, and ARC Caregivers, the Family Network of Western Connecticut, and the Regional Child Advocacy Center. It just seems like an awful lot. It seems like a lot of the agencies are doing the same thing, and I hope we can address it tomorrow night at the Grants Ad hoc Committee. Because when I look at that and I look at what happens to the seniors, I've been after the senior transportation in the town. And senior transportation got $12,000 through the Housing Authority for people who actually live in Housing Authority buildings. Not for other seniors in the community, but they do transport people from the Housing Authority itself. $16,641 went to the elderly services and zero to the Red Cross. So it totaled about $28,000 to try to help the seniors get around town in comparison to the 400 and some for the youth. And I'm not saying youth aren't important, but the seniors that lived in this town frequently all of their lives don't have anywhere with that money. And I, I just feel like they're on the short end of the stick. So I'm, I'm not happy with that. And with the school system, there was an enrollment increase of only 218 students total for a few years. And the budget keeps going up and up and up. It was 81,000, or, excuse me, 81 million, it's now 106 million for the same thing. It just seems overwhelming to me. Water and sewer funds, I thought the increased rates was because our fund balance was at zero. And we hadn't go up in the last few years. Granted, this year there is no increase. But when I look through the budget, the fund balance is still at zero, and I wasn't sure why. I also noticed the per capita debt for the city in 2002 was $668. It's gone to $1,248 per person living in the city for the debt of the city. And this is before we put on for the police station, which I know will be. I was gonna thank Dina, mainly because she's been a tremendous help for me getting information in the budget points and for her cooperation with me over the years, but she's not here, so y'all, that's the going. Basically, you know me, I have been before you every year for the last 12 years at least, and I have been talking about the grants. I'm still against a lot of the portions of them. There are too many agencies doing the same thing and too many people outside of Danbury being served by a Danbury taxpayers' dollars, and I think that's wrong. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
I'll plot a graph in case you wanna see what the budgets look like for the last 17 years. The blue is the education, the purple is the city side of the budget. And as usual, we'll continue to go up. Cost of living does that. But I really would like us to try to get it in check or to try to help the seniors a lot more than we are. I'm most grateful for the 350, but I'll tell you, each time it goes up, it drives more and worse out of our home. Thank you.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Margaret Mitchell, I'm a taxpayer. We own property at Main Street and Park Place in Danbury. Lynn Wallen must talk to some of the same seniors I do, but I also talk to seniors who are concerned about the transportation budget. They aren't really concerned with how much money you put in the budget. They're concerned with the fact that it's often very difficult to have coordination to get the riding of individuals. And so if there's anything members of the Common Council or the mayor could do to fine-tune the efficiency of the rides for the seniors, I know they'd all be very grateful. They were rooting for the Red Cross because that program takes you to the medical appointments that can take everybody that isn't either on a stretcher or in a wheelchair. And so they, they were hoping that if you cut some other agency, you would consider filling in with the Red Cross riding program because that's so beneficial to the seniors. And since I still drive, I, I tried to pretend for a couple of days that I lost that ability. And it really brings home to you what shape you'd be in if you were dependent on other people all the time to get you groceries and everything. So I understand. They said to me, "Margaret, when you're through talking about the East Ditch, would you talk about the transportation?" Well, for this year, I'm through talking about the East Ditch. I hope you'll keep it in mind for next year or the year after, whatever. And I'm very thrilled that, that you're gonna have a drainage plan for the whole downtown. And so I did cover their transportation after I did the ditch. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Is there anybody else? Mrs. Mitchell, I don't.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay. If you can just, I'm gonna let everybody have one bite at the apple first, and then I'll follow back up. Is there anybody else on the left-hand side of the room that wishes to address the council on ordinance? The first item on the agenda. Center of the room. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Steve Raggeback. I'm the father of a 27-year-old girl with disabilities that lives at 20 Stetson Place in Danbury. And the only reason she and nine of her friends with disabilities have that, their own condominiums and their own independent lifestyle is because of the work of We Care, which I am also a president of the board. And some of our major funding comes from the town, Dan, City of Danbury. And I'd like to thank you for that. And I'd also like to, you know, ask for your continued support in the funding. We Care is really a unique organization in that we are purely advocacy for people with disabilities, and that's any disability, any age. And there's no charge, we don't charge, charge any of our, we call them clients, but there's no charge involved. And we help these people find the right support services, the right organization that can help them. We help with housing, we help with medical needs, we help parents with support. And we do this for over 350 people in the past year. The majority of, we serve five towns, but the majority of our clients come from Danbury. And I'd just like to thank you for your support in the past and hope you continue to be as generous as you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just a reminder to everyone, tomorrow night, the Granite DC Committee meeting is at 5:30 in City Hall. Anyone else from the center of the room wish to address the council? Anyone from the right-hand side of the room wish to address the council? You wanna come back up to him?
I apologize.
No apology necessary.
I would like to address two items on this budget in particular. The first is the school budget. Now, I don't know why is the mayor and the council willing to give a 6% increase to schools in Danbury when we all know that test scores are down and the mission is almost flat. In the world of business, if a person does not perform his job well, he does not get a reward, a 6% increase in pay, he probably gets a split. But I ask, why are the schools performing at the same level with declining test scores? We taxpayers are not getting a very good deal. Isn't it time to make our schools subject to the same rules we all live by? We all eat British, we all enjoy improvement. We, the taxpayers, demand accountability. The second item that I want to, I want to address is the grant section. After reading the mission statements, I could not help but notice that several agencies duplicate or closely resemble other agencies. Why are taxpayers burdening paying over $1 million for all these agencies to provide services to a relatively small group of people? Why do area towns send their residents to these agencies and Danbury taxpayers end up paying for most of it? Area towns do not pay much or enough into these agencies if they're using. Also, these agencies receive grants from state and federal governments. This is all our tax money. There's one agency I'm asking you to stop all funding to, and that is the Hispanic Center, which is openly admitting to helping illegal aliens find work. This is against Article 8, Section 1324 of the Immigration Code, and is a felony. I gave Mr. Riley a copy of Article 8 so that he could, uh, avail himself and the Ad hoc Committee of the details of that immigration law. Mrs. Lowey, the director, openly advocates that our local, state, and federal law enforcement stop enforcing our laws. This is empty, plain and simple, and no taxpayer money should ever be given. and no taxpayer money should ever be given to this agency. This is terrible that we have somebody in this town, you know, actively doing this to our own government. I would like to suggest that all these agencies get their funding either by fundraisers or donations from corporations and foundations with very deep pockets. I gave Mr. Riley two lists of donors that are people that, organizations and companies that have funded very well to La Raza and Maldeff, which are both Hispanic organizations, and I'm sure that any other organization would be welcome too for their funds. There are hundreds of ways to raise money through carnivals, tag sales, et cetera. These agencies can band together and have a big fundraiser. People would prefer to give and to make those decisions themselves to give their donations of charity to the individual, family companies or organizations rather than have taxpayer money go. And maybe I don't want to fund a particular agency, or maybe I would prefer all my money to go to another agency. Mr. Riley can suggest this to these agencies at the ad hoc meetings. I'm asking this council to have pity on the taxpayers and stop the rates. This budget requires a tax increase. Governor Rell's budget has an increase. Food costs are rising. Gas is up to $270 a gallon. Electricity is way up. We just can't keep increasing taxes without causing problems for families trying to cope and especially for senior citizens living on fixed incomes. Everything is going up. Nothing comes down. We ask you to just say no. And I ask everyone here who agrees with me to please stand up. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the council on the first ordinance tonight before us for levying the property tax? Anyone else wishing to speak to the council about the ordinance levying the property tax? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak about the ordinance levying the property tax? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance number two, which is an ordinance appropriating $500,000 bonds for public improvements in the 2007-2008 capital budget. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council on this tonight? Is there anyone in the room that wishes to address the council on the bond appropriations? Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council on the bond appropriations? Seeing none, I will ask the mayor if there's anything he wanted to address to the council tonight.
I appreciate the latitude, you've done a fine job tonight.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the public hearing.
Sir? Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, would you like to run it? Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting, public hearing close. Thank you.